...of our budget June 13, June of 2013. So this was how we started this fiscal year. And then I'm gonna walk you through a few earmarked allocations that you need to factor in. On page five, you'll see that the weight is forming. You'll see this on both pages. You'll see at the top, you'll see different columns. General, special revenue, TIF, special revenue, debt service, capital projects, permanent, and then I'd skip over to proprietary. Okay, I'm gonna explain each one of these just a little bit to you guys so that you can follow along. You might wanna make a note or two at the top. General is, of course, exactly what it sounds like. It is the general fund. That is where the money for, that's where the eight-ten goes to, that's where the twenty-seven TIF levy, the emergency levy goes to. That is where your local option sales tax money is transferred into...
Eighty percent up.
Eighty percent, correct. Uh, oh, there the other two. There's a lot there.
Good morning, I travel.
Do you want the lights off?
I've been really paid attention.
Sorry about Tuesday night. Scratch the volume. We have ballgames.
I figured.
Yeah. I totally spaced off calling.
Barb, what we get started on is in this little packet, since both issues we discussed a little bit are impacted by finances, and since the finance committee kind of puts a different picture than everyone else, I think I'd give a finance committee discussion of finances so that everyone's on the same page when we discuss how money impacts these, both these issues. So if you turn to the second, third page of this, you'll see a page five and you'll see a page twelve. These are straight out of the annual financial report as determined by the auditor for June of last year. So the starting point is June of last year. What you'll see on both of these pages is at the top, you'll see general, special revenue, debt service, capital projects, permanent. I'm just gonna kind of explain a little bit what each one of those columns means because this is how we're audited is on these levels of fund, fund sources. General is, is what it seems to suggest. It's the eight-ten levy that we collect. It's the twenty-seven cent emergency fund we collect. It's the low, eighty percent of the local option sales tax money. Those, and it is, that's primarily what you see sitting in the general fund. There's a little bit of other stuff. Pool revenue, cemetery, certain types of cemetery revenue, police restitution, those type of things also make up a very small portion.
The fines go into general fund?
Does what?
Fines?
Yeah, restitution, fines, things of that nature, all go into general fund. Special revenue is primarily one of a couple of things. It is primarily your road use tax money that comes in because the state requires us to identify it separately. And it also primarily includes your special taxation, your property taxation, your employee benefits, your, well, and that's primarily it, your employee benefits and your, and your road use tax money. There's a couple other small things as well. I'm generalizing for the most part, hitting the big pieces. You see, we don't have TIF revenue because we don't have a TIF set up in town. Debt service is the next one, and it is exactly what it sounds like. Debt service, it pays our debts. Capital projects, capital projects, this is a little bit of a hodgepodge. Capital projects primarily year-over-year is airport projects. They get lumped into this area. If we have some special projects that are being made through significant projects, sometimes they will, we'll put them into the capital project so we can identify them separately from the general fund or from the utility funds or something of that nature and scratch that. Then you have the permanent fund. Primarily, the permanent fund is not our money. That's the best way to understand it. That is your fire department long-term capital, capital. That is your cemetery, perpetual care. There is no justifiable reason or means to use that money without a third-party involvement and only for special purposes.
Do we get any of the interest off of that?
No. Not the, not the fire. On the semi-care line, there is some, there is some rules in place to how much of it goes to perpetual care and how much of it goes to, to the city. Under, then I'll skip over to proprietary. Proprietary is all of the utilities combined together because in the eyes of the state, all they really look at at that, at this level is all of the utilities summed together. So this would be your storm sewer, your water, your gas, your sanitary sewer, and it's all rolled, being all rolled up, garbage, all being rolled up into that one fund source. And of course, under the rules of the state, they don't want us using the proprietary fund for the government, governmental fund purposes. Governmental fund, as you can see there under number G, is everything except proprietary fund, identified as everything except proprietary fund. So the numbers that you see starred on page five was the beginning balance, that would have been the balance July 1st, 2000, make sure I don't get my years wrong, 2012. Then what you also see starred on there, and I have R A V put beside it, is that's what we collected in that particular year towards that fund. And then the bottom, the bottom financial line on that page was where it takes the revenue and the beginning balance and some, and totals them together. So you'll see the amounts there. Then we skip over to page twelve. Page twelve is the same, primarily the same type of setup. And what you see is at the bottom, you'll see the main, the main two lines are the two lines at the bottom. The line I have starred is the line of, that's the ending fund balance line. The line below it was the activity for that particular account. So you'll see that the general fund ended the year at $761,887, which sounds great, but it, in all practicality, it's not, not a reality number. The first thing you have to cut out of that is a lot of one-time money. There was half a million dollars generally of one-time money for the overlay project that we got from D O T. So if you cut that out, I guess that number got to be about $261,000. If you cut out the $50,000 for additional crack ceiling we took out of reserves in the budget last, the budget this year, that would, or last year, that, or this year, that would cut that number down to more in the neighborhood of about $210,000. We have earmarked money, we've earmarked $75,000 for the facade project out of that number as well. So you'd have to actually add on another subtraction of one-time money of, of $75,000 for that purpose. So you can see, we're down around, we're down under $150,000 once you start getting into those numbers. We also purchased for about $32,000 a one-time purchase of a Bobcat out of reserves. So you have to cut that number. That now gets us down into the hundred and ten, hundred and twenty thousand dollar range as far as rollover balances goes. Because these are now numbers that aren't going to show up next year, but they were earmarked or not planned to in the budget this year that we went ahead and expended. So, so as you can see, we are move, we are, and I know I'm at least forgetting one other item in there that had come to me. But, oh, well, we had about $55,000 or, oh, that was already accounted for last year. I'm sorry.
Adam, I have a question.
Sure.
If money was tight and we knew it was tight, when we talked about that Bobcat, that was never really discussed. I mean, it wasn't. So I think for future reference, if money is tight, we need to discuss that when we're making these kind of decisions. Because had we known that, I mean, that decision may not have been made. You agree with me or no? Council members, you agree?
We discussed it, though.
Yeah, we discussed it, but I don't think in terms of this is how much money we have to work with, you know, was it really discussed? Am I wrong or right?
No, we really didn't have.
We just discussed the issue.
We didn't have a picture of what that would do to the remaining amount of money. That's all I'm saying is, and I, I just think it's important to know what we're working with before the decision is made to go ahead and purchase. That's all, the only point I'm making.
Very good point.
Huh?
Good point.
Because in, in your home budget, if you only have $50 in your account, you aren't gonna buy a $75 whatever, you know? So I think if we have that, if the council has the information, it would be really helpful. And that's all.
And that, and that's the point of the discussion today, is the kind of...
Yeah, but it's kind of after the fact, so I'm asking about it to be before the fact. So that's all.
Under the special revenue, you run into the road use tax money. We're not allowed to sit on road use tax money. So in most cases, what you'll see is, you'll see there'll be action in there to use every bit of the road use tax money up. Now, there's other money included in that. Special revenue money, for the most part, what you're seeing is rollover balance there is money associated with the requirements of us adjusting our health care, adjusting our tort liability insurance, things of that nature. This money, for the most part, I want to let you know, is not available for project-related Then we get over into debt service, same scenario there. The money that is allocated and located in debt service can only be used for debt service purposes. It could be used in a major project to repay debt if we borrow money. Can we use it in lieu of, of borrowing money? No, but we can use it to repay any borrowed money we could do.
But in theory, we could borrow that amount of money and use it to repay it.
Yes, with internal, yes, yeah. Capital projects, this money is, of course, related to projects as well. Any money that flows into the capital projects is already pre-earmarked before whatever flows into the capital project. So it's not available. Well, I guess I just should say, debt service, capital projects, permanent money are all, are all earmarked purpose monies. There, you have a very limited, narrow scope on how that money can be used, if, if at all. Then proprietary is where you get into, and you can see where this is always the discussion about being in projects, is the rollover balance within the proprietary fund. You'll see that there's about $700,000 right now. The lion's share of that, nearly all of it, is the gas fund. The other funds have very little to no rollover balances. So the, our goal has always been to try to develop not only our general fund balance, but also our proprietary fund balances. The I A M U recommends that we keep the gas fund somewhere in the neighborhood of about 500 to, 500,000 to a million dollars. And right now, and of course, this is just recently, with the commitment of the facade project that we have built in half of that $75,000, we are skirting right around the 500 to 400 and $75,000 range of the gas fund. So the gas fund really, I mean, it, it has to be very, we have to be very careful about...
I thought the facade came out of the general.
Seventy-five thousand did, seventy-five thousand came out of the gas. It was a fifty-fifty split.
Okay.
In fact, the Clayton Energy people were talking much closer to a million, being a comfortable reserve for the gas fund, because they said you could easily have a $50,000 repair on, on, on the gate. And I see, I said that, the half million dollar repair is, is very, very possible.
So when, when the discussions of council meetings have turned towards one of our financial options are, you can see where usually those discussions are turned to, we primarily, as far as large options go, debt service, borrowing money, the general obligation borrowing money is a major, main, large financial option we have in our, in our toolbox. For small purposes, we do have some playroom in the general fund, but one thing I would say about the general fund that we always have to be careful of, the general fund money doesn't come in every month. We get two allocation. The primary bulk of that money is tax money. It comes in two months a year. So there are ebbs and flows to the state of the financial cash flow of the general fund. So when you start hearing me using terms about cash flow for projects, it may not be that we don't have, we won't have the money throughout a fiscal year for a project, but over the cash flow period of a six-month period, there may be times when the money in the general fund is a much lighter than, than what would be perceived. So, not to depress you, but, you know, you, I, I think sometimes there's some questions about, well, why don't we have the money? And I think the finance committee here is a lot more of this than the non-finance committee, council members here. And so I wanted to spend a little bit of time kind of going over. The unfortunate thing is, is that once you spend the money, the recovery of the general fund, or of any of the funds for that matter, is relatively slow. You know, I, well, it took us six years to build up $100,000 primarily in the general fund. And so, you know, we, we have seen that bleed off almost $120,000 in a, in a 12-month period. So you can see where six years of recovery were spent in a one-year cycle. So it, it goes back to our personal finances. It's always easier to spend than it is to make it.
The acronym G A A P is what?
Accounting Principles. Governmental Accredited Accounting Principles. There are a couple of different ways that you can, you can collect your data and manage your data and use cash basis instead of the G A A P. And they have to, they're required to identify which of the two sources.
Yeah, I, I saw it, I was just saying, my brain wasn't working fast enough to figure out the acronym.
I'm not sure about the first A. G, I know it's governmental something, accounting principles, but I don't remember what the first A is. So, you know, the two things that we had on the agenda to discuss today were funding for major projects like the street projects, for instance. And then there was also, it kind of lays into the discussions, because we've played around with some models for housing development over the last couple of months. And, and it comes into a reality of what, if money is involved in obtaining something, you now have, may have a different perspective when we talk about buying land. If we go to buy land, particularly farmland, it's going to run in the neighborhood of between 10 to 14,000 dollars an acre. Unless we can create a structured financial model that shows what the return on that investment is going to be, and the initial investment's going to be, there is some financial limitations as far as how far we can string ourselves out. It's also one of the reasons why, as we've had these discussions, we, I've always been talking about a pilot type of scenario, that we do something like around the, the south of the, the...
Hospital and lawns.
Oak Terrace. Just as an example, you know, there's about six lots there, the development's relatively inexpensive to do. There wouldn't be a significant amount of outlay, probably even requiring any type of borrowing type of scenario. But, you know, we've looked at some farmland options, and say, for instance, we wanted to go after even 20 acres of farmland, and to, even if we had a deal at $10,000 an acre, you're talking about $200,000.
But then what's your return on investment gonna be?
Absolutely. And that's where we have to sit down.
I mean, I just, I drive to Wall Lake all the time now with softball, and I go into that town every day, and I'm like, really, why? They're pouring new street going in, they've got new houses going in and that, right down the north into town then. Why can't Sac City do that? It drives me nuts. So I think we really, that's something we really need to look into.
As far as the hospital is concerned, they were talking $10,000 a lot when we talked to them before, and they would sell it for $10,000 a lot. So you're talking $60,000 if they, you say there's 10 lots. So let's look at that. Is that a doable thing? Would we get our return on investment? And how long would it take? Because I don't honestly think they're gonna give it to us. I don't think they're in a financial situation where they're just gonna handle the land, do you think?
$10,000 is pretty feasible, I think, for...
So if that's a place, then we gotta be realistic and say, okay, if that's what they ask for, is that an undoable thing that we can really think about? And if so, how do we figure our return on that? And how quickly would we get some of that return?
When you do go down the route of discussing return on investment, players in that game are going to be, of course, property tax return, utility return. You also have a, a little bit less direct is going to be purchasing power. You know, you're driving that on the idea you have a new family, and you're expanding the amount of people in town, and they're going to be buying things in town and therefore paying more locally than it proves, of course, the overall property tax base. I would say it increases local option sales tax, but as you probably, some of you are probably aware, that's, that's not necessarily true, based on how the model for local option sales tax works.
But I would think more in the line of, what would the, if, I mean, if they build a new house, it's gonna be, what do you guess, not less than 150,000?
I'd say that's good.
So let's look at what it is for taxes, what it would be for utilities, what it would be for the things that they actually pay back. If we are, are we thinking we're charging for that lot? Are we thinking, how, how are we going about this? I think we can come up with some actual numbers, don't you?
How do other cities that do those houses, do they charge for the lots?
They do it both ways. I, I've seen it different ways. Some of them will primarily just give away the lots with a, with a restriction that they have to start, they have to break around a structure within 12 months. I've seen other places where they actually build the houses and then try to sell off the houses. I, I've also seen where they sell the lots for a nominal fee, $1,000 somewhere in that neighborhood, so they can recoup some of their cost upfront.
I've seen some where they will take, they'll sell the lot for actual value, but then they rebate it at like 10% of the cost of the structure that was there, going back to, you know, until, until it become, I mean, they never, they never pay them to build a house. But if you had a $15,000 lot, and you bought 100,000, but built a $150,000 house, it would rebate it back to zero.
And, and one thing that'll have to be factored into this as we have this discussion, so that we have a complete discussion, is we'll have to take into consideration what we already have in place as far as incentives go, because, yeah, for us, the tax payment...
So that means that you can't really count in the...
So we have five, we really have five years before we would be collecting, or the sixth year would be the first year we'd collect any significant tax.
Any significant, that's a good way to put it, significant. As far as a utility customer goes, of course, you start right away. But typically, if we're going to have to develop towards something and have to put in mains, we're probably gonna be spending the first four to five years, and of course, this is all speculative. But let's say we had to run mains to something, we're probably gonna spend the first five years recouping the cost primarily associated with running the utilities before the utilities really see it. I figure a break-even point, really, honestly, guys, you're looking at a break-even point between five to eight years. I'm not saying that's a problem. I'm just saying that in, in reasonability factors, you can expect to break even somewhere in the five to eight year mark. Now, you know, I'd be amiss not to tell you that not every one of these type of programs works. I can think of at least two cities right now that I'd rather not name that I know have done, and they're trying to scramble all over the place to pay for the project because they're not selling the houses at the speed. They, I would say that they probably overinflated their expectations about how quickly the lots would sell. And, and as a result, they're struggling to pay their debt service associated with the project.
If you did, if we did that and we purchased those ten lots, would we look at allowing someone to purchase two of them to maybe put up a duplex? Or is this gonna be a single, are we going to set some stipulations on how the lots can be used?
That'd be a question for the council.
So how big is that area, actually?
I think when we originally looked at it and tried to carve it up, that six lots is primarily what we'd solve. They were gonna be oversized lots were kind of what the focus was. But, but I also thought I remembered that for six, what the, and maybe I was wrong, but I thought the hospital was talking about $20,000 a lot for about six lots went to space, so it gave about $120,000.
I, I thought you said 10 to me. I could be mistaken because our conversation was quite a while ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Recouping our money would actually be based on the formula that we also...
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, there is a...
Right. But if, I mean, this is my opinion, if we don't do something to progress this town, you're not gonna have anything. And I can tell you right now for a fact that I know of someone who was looking for a house in town and looked at three or four of them, and none of them were what they wanted. So they're looking elsewhere. So...
Back to your question, I guess one thing I would like to look at would be a situation like in Dixon addition, where you have a lot of people who have bought a vacant lot to enlarge their lot. I guess, I mean, if we have six or 10 lots or whatever, I'd like to see six or 10 houses instead of, instead of house and vacant lot.
For our structure to likely work on whatever repayment plan we put in place, we'd almost have to have some kind of covenant in there that would include that the str, that structure we built on every lot.
And if we, if we gave an incentive such as giving them a really good price on that lot, I would think we could stipulate that it had to be done within a certain period of time.
Yeah. You can re, you can put those type of restrictions over there.
I would really prefer to take it down to only one.
I guess you can do it, however, but isn't, aren't all the utilities and everything there?
Primarily, yes. I mean, we'd have to run a little bit of service on here and there.
That's the nice thing about that area, it's for a starter area, because everything's already there.
And it's not, we're not looking at 20 houses either, you know, we're starting small.
The advantage is, is if you do something like that, and I've used that as the scenario, but it's not, that's not the only location, but if you use that location, you have an inexpensive buy-in. If they don't sell, you go back and go, okay, well, the demand was minimal or perceived. We didn't spend a whole lot of money doing a 30, a 30-lot location, and boy, we dodged a bullet. Now, if they sell up real fast, it gives every justification for duty for...
To go forward again, yeah. You know, we've talked about a lot of other scenarios and going elsewhere, but we always come back to this. And if we are gonna think about moving forward on anything, maybe we should focus on something that we can handle instead of looking at something to run all the lines and...
And that was the purpose of having the financial discussion, whether it's the street project or housing development, to have an understanding and perspective of what our financial options are as we're moving through these things.
I think housing and streets are so integrally related because we, if we can increase the tax base, we can also begin to tackle the infrastructure. Unfortunately, we probably have to begin to tackle infrastructure more than five to eight years. I mean, at least that's, I mean, I don't, I don't think we can say, well, we're going to wait till we start getting more tax money from housing development in, in any real sense before we begin to tackle infrastructure. I mean, I think the two of them have to go hand in hand. But in the long, in the long run, we've gotta get, in somehow increase property values other than what the assessor decides to do for us.
And, and the vicious cycle we find ourselves in is, since primarily we are limited in our fund options to borrowing against general obligation, what we find is, is we have three primary internal concerns financially. One is, is that we are looking at street projects, regardless of what financial version we decide to go through, is a significant amount of general obligation debt anticipated in that project. The, and then, of course, anything you'd have associated with this housing would be a general obligation debt. You throw on top of that, and why it is in our capital plan, it's always a discussion item, we have two or three large pieces of equipment that aren't getting any younger. The backhoe, for instance, isn't getting any younger, the road grader, those two units alone are almost half a million dollars in, in equipment purchases. So the way that they've been paid for in the past was general obligation debt and repaid to that infrastructure. So, you know, we have to look at all of our priorities, unfortunately, when we also look at this. What is our biggest goals and concerns? And make sure that we are addressing those when we do this. And I would say those are probably, if we're looking at housing development, we're looking at our internal replacement of equipment, and we look at... and we look at the streets, those three things are the thing, all three things are looking at general obligation money to provide for their projects. Uh, so we have to be very smart about how we approach all three from a financial standpoint.
The one thing that housing development would do is would, would increase our bonding capacity.
Yes.
Because we, I mean, so if you have, if you have six houses at two hundred thousand dollars, that's one point two million dollars, and five percent of that's what, sixty thousand? Now, what, that, it's not much, but we're talking ten percent of the road grader.
Uh, that's a, that's a lease payment, uh, a leased purchase payment on equipment like that, or at least one of the two pieces of equipment.
I mean, that, I mean, that, that would be a very real, tangible, immediate thing if they were there.
And, and we have to keep in mind, remember the fellow that came here and recorded the housing? It was a prime thing he thought we needed to work on because of all the properties that really aren't livable. Were you at that meeting where you talked about empty houses, unlivable housing, that this was something that our town really needed to take a look at? And I go back to, I've driven around and looked in some of the lots where there's a dumpy old house that needs to go. There's a nice lot there, it would be who wants to think about at least offering that up. Maybe a contractor would take that lot and build a house. Maybe he could afford to speculate on it if he had the lot. I don't know. It is reaching out, I guess.
I think you have to look at a lot.
Yeah.
Utilizing, you know, you have two.
Yeah.
I mean, combine the two, but you might get something going a little quicker if you, well, if we would go around and look at that possibility.
To where, where.
You know, I'm not good at telling you, it's a, I can go around and look again.
If you drive around town, there's any number on that, you could say it, needs to go, needs to go, needs to go.
No, no, I mean, I mean, our, our, where we have, or the lots that we have available, I mean, that.
Ones that are empty now?
Yeah, that are empty now.
I can't tell you an address, I just know that, I drove around town and looked, and I meant, there's a place that might be.
Well, Wellholms have a really nice lot, kind of out by the elementary school, that big corner, it's, it's Wellholmes now.
Sixteenth and Dishweiler.
Yeah.
There's also a double lot up by the, of that little church.
Right.
Cause I looked at that, this house.
Uh, by the?
Next to, yeah, it's.
Sixty, almost to Sixteenth Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a block off of Highway Twenty.
Yeah, I've been looking at that, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's solid houses on them that could be.
Well, these are empty.
Yeah, and these are empty lots.
I know, but then there's solid houses that could, you know, two that would be more empty.
There's an empty lot up on Early Street next to Peg Depp's.
So, how, I mean, I still think that the hospital thing is a better option for us, but I think this is another option too, to look at. I mean, how hard would it be for the city to do something like that?
The best thing is, is to get.
We'd just have to purch, we would just have to purchase the lots and.
Yeah, get them at a reasonable rate of an investment and be able to work out a deal with the hospital. I know when we talked to them.
No, I'm talking about like the empty lots that we already, not, I mean, we've already discussed the hospital.
Oh, sorry, I, I was confused.
Yeah, like if we, like Bart's talking.
Well, it, you, are you talking with a house already on it?
Well, either way.
Okay, well, uh, with a house already on it, one of the things that we've talked about doing this year is working with P and Z to see about, one of our biggest problems is many of these lots are too small to meet the minimum lot requirement under our zoning code. So if you tore the house down, many of them, and I'm generalizing, of course, Teresa, but many of them would be too small to be permitted to put a new house on it. What I've been floating out there and trying, testing the waters the last year on, I know Tom and Bruce both heard me talking about this last year during P and Z, was, uh, providing spot zoning for, uh, for reclaiming lots. Um, the example I used was the house that burnt down west of the mansion, that was torn down. Um, that lot is too small for a house to be built on it under our code. If somebody bought that lot, they wouldn't be able to build a house on it right now. But if we were to, um, if the P and Z were to set up some kind of program to reclaim those lots and give spot zoning opportunities in those cases, then what we could do is, is as part of a reclaiming process, allow houses, smaller houses to be built on those locations. So it makes them functional lots again. Because you have to remember, when the lots were originally cut out, they really weren't designed with the intent of a zoning code. And when the zoning code was put in place, they said, oh, well, the minimum lot size is this to build the house. Well, uh, all of the old town portion, where you have a lot of your older houses, are not, don't meet that minimum requirement for a lot. So you'll find that down, be, down in the, um, um, on South Fifth Street, going down behind the bank and down in that area. A lot of those properties down in there do not meet the minimum lot size requirement. So, um, I, I, I've been talking about this for about a year now, kind of pushing it out there. Um, I suspect we'll be ready to move on that this year, that I'll be presenting that to the P and Z board this year for, for a quarter. There will be opposition, though, and be prepared, there will be opposition, because there are some people that believe spot zoning is absolutely a horrible thing, and should never be done. So, um, you'll see some opposition to that.
But there, there could be, uh, an elderly couple that moves into town, and they want a one-story house, two-bedroom, and they don't want a lot of yard to take care of, cause they're retiring. That kind of lot would be perfect for house size.
You know, I, I really think that spot zoning, I think that's a, a no brainer, I mean, what are you, you know, it's, it's kind of like holding your nose, what are your choices? Let a little house rot, make it worse, drop the value of everything else around, or, or make a little compromise and say, well, permit a smaller home or whatever you put there. In, in terms, rather than the term spot zoning, is there a way to word in ordinance that would say house replacement?
Now, uh, another option, Bruce, but this may be enough of a change in our zoning code that would require it to be recodified, and that would be, uh, changed this, the size of the lots, um, to reflect what old town's lot sizes were. Now, there's a counter option, there's a counter problem to that. If we now say that the smallest lot size instead of sixty-five is fifty-five, you might have other people trying to build smaller houses in other areas that, so you, it, it's counted, might, might cause problems in those areas. Um, but that's another option on how to tackle that problem, is instead of just building a spot zone, change what the size, the average size of, of lots are, so.
Or could you do that by?
Or minimum lots, I should say.
Could you do that by saying, creating a, an, let's say, a, a central housing district where that would be the prevalent, the prevalent situation? And in this, and in this district, you have to have a fifty-five foot lot? But if we're looking at something, for example, out in the hospital area, the fifty-five foot lot would not be appropriate?
Oh, yes, you could do that. You, you need to create a certain, you would need to create a certain class of zone, and then you would have to update the map to, to signify that area of the map. Uh, but that's another option, in hindsight.
We have a central business district, we've got a central housing district.
Cause right now, you have three, generically, three residential zones in town. You have R one, R two, and R three. Uh, you technically have an R three mobile that is on the books, but doesn't have a location in town. R one is primarily residential, R two is mixed residential, R three is a weird animal. Um, it is really mixed residential, and what you do is, every, as the numbers go up, more commercial type of activity is allowed in each one of these districts. R three mobile was, I'm going to guess, put on the books with a specific intent of creating a mobile park out there and its own distinct zone.
Trailer parking?
But it, yes, but it was never, uh, never codified into the map. Uh, it's on our books, uh, saying that we might have these type of zones, but we don't have any of those zones in town, so. Uh, but you could set up an R four, which would be a, um, a re- reclamation area, uh, specifically for those, uh, those lots.
Just a thought, since you just said that. Would that be a possibility for a housing area?
Uh, the property is privately owned now, but I.
Oh, the whole trailer per property?
Uh, the, the, yeah, all of the, um, community property are unsold lots. They're all owned by the, I shouldn't say original owner, the, the new, or new owner of it, because it was either passed down through death, or it was sold at one time to a new owner. But yeah, we do, we don't own or maintain the road back there or any of that.
Well, I do think we did, yeah.
The lots that are.
Pretty obvious we don't, when you deliver me a phone, we don't.
And he has, and, and the owner has expressed interest, actually, now that you bring that up, the owner has expressed interest, primarily on the road. I don't know about the other lots, I wouldn't know why he would, but he, uh.
Well, that's maybe another option we could look at.
Yeah, I had never really considered that as a possibility.
The other place, I don't know the history of, but in Dixonville, there's a couple lots that, there's a little gazebo sitting.
Oh.
In it. Is that a special memorial to somebody, or?
Nearing's put that up, didn't they?
Who owns the property?
Dominus, yes.
Dominus owns the property?
No, the, the, I don't know, you know, L and E.
Yeah, yeah.
That's kind of left of the community, or to the, to the little, um, dummy at the, the block, kind of left of the block.
The neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you, the neighborhood.
Easier way.
Like our thing up there.
Yeah, right, would you call the gazebo place like it is?
By the way, you have a lot too, that would, we really have a beautiful lot for a house.
It would. I'll sell it for ninety thousand dollars. That's the only reason I bought the house, was for the two double lot.
You mean where you live now?
You're gonna buy my house when you buy that lot, because I, I will never get rid of that lot.
I know, that's where we are too.
I wanted land when I bought it.
Well, with that, that kind of goes back to what I was talking about, if we do a housing area. I mean, I think the lots need to be spacious enough that, that people don't feel like, oh, I need to have two or three lots and put my house in the middle of it, and.
You have two buyers. One, I think is gonna be more of the physically capable buyer who's looking, who doesn't mind the mowing, the two and a half hours of mowing an acre, uh, the, uh, wants the garden, wants that type of thing. Then I think you're gonna have more of the, uh, the senior purchaser, who's looking to downsize into something that, from a size wise, that they don't have to spend two and a half hours messing with.
That's why I guess I don't think it would be a bad idea if you did, if we did do, like, mowing or whatever, to let them put duplexes on there, cause we're an older community. And, I mean, yeah, we wanna bring young people to the community, but why not have the option there where they could put, you know, buy two lots and put a duplex on it?
Well, one of the advantages I've always said to encouraging senior living in town, um, and that has two advantages up there. But typically, the senior living, uh, individuals have more liquidable funds to spend in the local community.
And they don't go far out.
Absolutely. The, but one of the advantage, one of the unique advantages of that location up there is it's right by all of the healthcare providing services, other than the pharmacy granted.
There's a pharmacy in the hospital. Who owns the, yeah, who owns the land across the road from both terrace?
That is Highlands.
Even, not across the road this way, across the road north and south.
North?
No.
You mean south?
South.
Wartches's owns some of it.
Just behind the row of houses is Wartches's.
But the row of houses doesn't go to the end of the block?
Their hostings did own that little section there at one time, I don't know if they, that little grass section.
Yeah, I think they were looking to get one more lot out of that at some point, he was thinking. At least that was the story I was told.
It used to be hostings, I don't know if they still do now, but, that's what I was told at one time. Cause I had a problem with it.
So, is it in the plan for somebody to go to the hospital, or, I know you talked about it at one time.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually, as I leave here, them stop by and say, Kinsley Mike Green, he still hasn't got a hold of me about urban development related activities, so, uh, kill two birds with one stone in that discussion, and they're coached in more seriously with a housing development, uh, or for a land opportunity.
Those people living there would accentuate their business also at the hospital, so that's something they should consider.
You bet.
Guess one other option, maybe, you know, what can we do to encourage a private company builder, whatever, to establish a housing development, I mean?
Well, you know as well as I do, we've probably taken the biggest step we could take. And that is relaxing our subdivision roles, uh, subdivision balances.
I mean, I know, but I mean, uh, we did that, but I mean, is there a way that we can actively recruit someone else to accomplish what we want, is better housing? And, I mean, ideally, if, if we can get someone else to take the risk and leave the city's capital to do things that we, other things that we want to do.
Other than a big, uh, rather than a big housing district, or I know six houses isn't huge, but I was, you know, I've talked to a couple of them. I think they're more willing to take on building a spec house on a lot they get for nothing. You know what I mean? If we have one of those lots that's decent enough to build a house on, I think their risk would be, they're a little antsy about doing it, but I don't think the risk would be as great.
I don't know if you're gonna find anybody that's willing to take on that, Jacoba.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm just, I mean, even, or if there's a way to part, for the city and someone to partner, I mean.
The only thing we could do is just approach the people in town that.
It might be actually be somebody from out of town, because the.
Well, if you know somebody.
We have a lot of young builders, and I don't know whether they're willing to.
I mean, because if we look at some of the housing districts that we have, you know, historically, they have been developed by non-city entities, and I mean, I know that, I, I know the times have changed, I know that we can't live in the past. But the area where you live was built by, you know, that started off the Dixon family, and those were, they aren't anymore, but they were originally pretty modest homes, I mean, the people would have updated. We weren't building mansions, we were building affordable family homes that were being sold. Uh, the area by the hospital was, that was more independently developed too, wasn't it?
Well, that's, who owns the lot next to, down in you, that goes out where the sink holes are? Who owns that lot behind Frank's garden? Who owns that property?
You mean?
He owns all the way to the ground, I believe.
Yeah, I think Frank.
Frank's, Frank owns it?
Yeah.
From the front of his house to the, to the other street.
You know, from there to the corner, there's quite a bit of.
Frank always mows it, takes care of the side of the ceiling.
Thank you, right. Cause the old house goes the other direction to the pool, doesn't it?
Which, speaking of that spot right there at the corner of Tenth and Dishweiler, be the, to the north, be across the street from Steve Irwin's, uh, duplex where Steve used to live. I think that was taken over by FMHA, and they kind of let that place go. And, and I saw somebody pulling the driveway there last night.
I overheard somebody say the other day, that somebody's looking at it.
Really?
They're gonna buy it and supposedly redo it and move into it.
Well, that'd be good.
I think that could literally went out.
I'm not gonna say.
Isn't it?
Who owns that now? Is that FMHA?
Yeah.
And we should talk to them and say, you know, hey, you know, hopefully something, you know, transpires here. Uh, but if something doesn't transpire, I think if FMHA owns some of these things, I think we ought to put it on to them that they're responsible for keeping them up, they just can't own them and let them go down the, the toilet.
I agree. It looks awful.
That's a nice lot.
It is, great location too.
Yeah, very close to the school, close to the.
Pool, of course.
Park. Okay, what else do we need to talk about? I know, okay.
Well, are, are we in agreement? We can't make any decisions here, obviously. But if, if Mike, or if Adam's talking to Mike. Uh, you know, about the place out by the hospital, those lots, you know, we have to, you know, maybe put that on the agenda and come up with some agreement, hey, yeah, we really are interested in pursuing that, or, or is that the right form if you wanted to do that?
That would be the new stack, yeah.
Okay, is something that we can do an open session, or would you do that in a closed session if we're talking about acquiring property?
We can do it in closed. We can do it in closed session. I mean, let's see if there's interest and if there is, we'll go from there.
One other, one other question I had more procedural thing. I know that we did the public carings, the external loans for facade. Do we need to move forward on that? I mean, I know the facade.
We will be doing that this month, yeah.
Okay. All right, because I know the facade program is somewhat out there before we're going to be needing massive amounts of cash. But if we are having cash flow issues, maybe it's better to.
Well, honestly, more of the concern for that cash flow for the external purposes was primarily for the construction period of the project. I had never intended to use it or.
We are gonna recoup some of that though, right? Now, or was that the city's, that was what we contributed, right, a hundred and fifty?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Our, but we're putting some out there in the beginning.
Yes.
And we'll recoup that part of it.
Yes.
Right, it, it comes in, comes back out. I mean, the external loan is if we've got a hundred thousand dollar contractor bill that comes in that, you know, that we need to.
Right.
Cover for.
A great example is during the sewer project, we had one month ago, it was up to three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar bill. Our internal financing mechanisms could not sustain a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar bill, so.
So you just rolled the check for that one personally.
Yeah, that's why I lost the sales lot now.
Better up the price of the. Ninety and three hundred, that doesn't quite.
Too much of the profit.
I would suggest that if you have time that you drive around and I will make note of those places rather than just look at them and drive by them.
Well, I'm with you too, Bart, I do the same thing every time I drive around, I'm telling Mike. That would be perfect, that would be perfect, that one needs to go, but I don't remember the streets either.
And then look at the condition of street signs when you're doing that as well. Because it's, you'd be surprised.
Those, they're fading.
We're not looking for someplace, but people that come and are looking for an address, you know, they're pretty important, unless they use their phone or whatever, then they'll.
Well, in the looking we've done internally, there is not an advan, there is not an economy of scales when it comes to street signs. The difference between buying ten and buying a hundred of them doesn't save you any money because they have to retool for every so many of them because of the name changes. So you really don't save any money. So what Tom and I were just talking about, in fact, in just the last month, was how many to start buying on an annual basis. And what we talked about there is thinking maybe a street or two and buy new signs for a street or two. One thing I probably wouldn't mind having the council make a decision on that, maybe the next council meeting before we start implementing this, is a color scheme form. I don't want to be responsible for fixing the colors.
I'm gonna throw a wrench in that. If we're working with Blue Space and it comes down to having a whole, you know, having our community have a theme or whatever, I think we should not get ahead of that.
Yes, I guess, I was gonna do a question, I'm gonna try and replace what is there or are we gonna try and do something that looks a little?
Better.
Well, there are some mudcut rules in place as far as what their font has to be and the first letter needs to be capitalized, but it should be the only letter capitalized. They either need to be four or six inch letters. There, there is a standardization now in place for street signs. They have to be certain amount reflective, all of those.
Not reflective?
Reflective.
Oh.
So probably more than anything, what Blue Space would probably be a big player in is maybe choosing the color scheme. And maybe there might be some play as far as a couple of different options of font. Maybe one of those fonts might match the recommended fonts. So, yeah, I'll let, Tom and I were, like I said, only at the point of trying to decide how many sides, streets to focus on on an annual basis, but I'll let him know, we, we'll wait till we hear color scheme.
July twenty, July twenty ninth, we get to hear from Blue Space there.
Okay, yeah, exactly, yeah.